We're all very thankful for our new sound and video system. But I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 15th at 6 o'clock. We're going to start off with a prayer from Pastor Craig.
It's good to be here. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you. You told us to pray for those that are in leadership above us, those who help run things. We do pray that you give our leadership wisdom tonight. Help us to do right by the word of God. Help us to do right by morality. Help us to do right by our fellow man. Lord, help us as citizens to follow those things. Lord, give wisdom tonight, especially give our leaders the wisdom. They need to help our area, please, in Jesus' name. Man.
If we could stay standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe and one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust and trust in Jesus Christ.
We'll start with the approval of minutes. June 1st, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
I move we approve the events as presented.
Here are no objections. The June 1st, 2023, regular meeting minutes are approved.
I have one edit.
Oh, sorry.
It's ESA Transition Updates. The second pay after number 11. It just says Board. It says Bordeaux Pharmacy. A typographical error. It should be Bordeaux Pharmacy. West Avenue BOD.
So with that amendment, here are no objections. It is approved. Approval of accounts payable, June 8th, 2023, in the amount of $1,514,285.34. If there are no objections, that is approved. June 15th, 2023, $18,688.15. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of manual checks, June 9th, 2023, If there are no objections, that is approved. June 16th, 2023, in the amount of $108,219.16. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of payroll, June 9th, 2023, in the amount of $300,463.55. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of requisitions for June 15th, 2023, in the amount of $15,015.14. If there are no objections, that is approved. Do we have any announcements for today? No? Okay. So then we will open the floor for public comment. Just a reminder, everyone has three minutes. And as our bailiff had requested, if you could please sit at the table in front of us. So the first name that I have today is Mark Petit Pierre.
Good job. You don't appreciate me compared to Nazi. You like being a natural fascist.
Please sit.
You don't interrupt me.
Please take a seat.
You're not allowed to comment. You can ask me to sit, but it's not in the rules.
Please sit.
No? Why? It's not in the rules.
For security purposes, please sit.
I'm not doing anything against the law.
Mark, if you could please sit. Everyone else sits for public comment.
That's new, and it's not in the rules. Again, you're not allowed to interrupt me. Okay? So that's violating the rules. There's no rule about sitting down. So you have some serious control issue. It makes you beyond the help of dedicated professionals in the field. And Claire, so you quit to put your family first. I'm going to read a letter to the editor. I'm making a public comment to you all because it just goes over their heads. It's time for Jefferson County Morality Department. I'm writing this in reference to the most recent action taken by your always vigilant county commissioner. Drag Shows No More, published in the Spirit on June 7th. Apparently, our county commissioners are ignorant of the fact that minors in Jefferson County are already protected from displays of obscenity by federal and state law. Regardless, it seems it was past time to put a stop to your youth being abused by Bugs Bunny, shamefully stretching, stretching his long legs in his recurrent crossdressing and drag appearances. What's up with that, doc? Unfortunately, all the time and energy spent on policing morality by the petty bureaucrats in our county commission is relegating other county issues to the back burner. However, families in Jefferson County waiting for the arrival of essential emergency services would do so now in the comfort of knowing that their children were shielded from watching Donald Duck or eating without pants or Little Dorothy singing about the rainbow. Needs to be stated that despite their ill-founded zeal, the commissioners' recent auto de facto edicts amount to no more than half-caught measure. Truly committed to their farcical position, the commissioners ought to stop beating around the bush and establish a deficit county morality department. This pure representation of their big and innocent government spirit would be tasked with urgently destroying the sordid web of wickedness that has apparently, in all benuts to most of us, enveloped our corner of almost heaven. Good thoughts.
For public comment, we have Denise Nick. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Commissioner Ath, I'd like to congratulate you on your resignation. And from what I understand, a possible move. I see moving pods in front of your home as I drive by, so I can only assume that's the case. I'm here this evening as a lifelong citizen of this county. And in light of your resignation, Commissioner Ath, I'm requesting that you abstain from voting on any issues this evening concerning our county. Even though you are still considered a commissioner and resident for a few more days, these issues on this county's agenda will impact, it will not impact you or your family if you're moving out of this county. I hope you'll consider this as an option and do the right thing for the citizens who will continue to reside here. As far as Agenda Item 12, Letter C, under Nathan Cochran, the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. I realize Mr. Cochran's not here. But he is named in one of the injunctions that I've read. And I don't see how Mr. Cochran can advise this body when he's specifically named in the injunction. Mr. Cochran created the ordinance without the governing bodies directing him to do so. It is my opinion that Mr. Cochran being named is a conflict of interest, and he should recuse himself from providing any legal advice to this body where he's named within a suit. With that said, I've attended enough of these meetings to know that this item will be suggested to go into executive session for discussion. However, the injunctions have been made public. The names of the plaintiffs have been made public. And this issue has been placed on the agenda, which has been made public. Therefore, I'm requesting that all discussions related to this line item be made public as well. And lastly, shame on those who call themselves emergency services in this county, who knowingly withhold care, attention, and ambulance services from an entire community. Should be ashamed of yourself for voting for that. People's lives are at risk. Four ambulances within two miles of each other is not acceptable when there's a community going without one. And no to an ambulance tax. We are not going to pay it. We are going to fight this county with everything we have. Thank you.
We have Mel Klein.
Well, what I'm concerned about in Jefferson County is the ambulance. You have one in Charlestown, you have one in Harpers Ferry, you have one in Shepherdstown. We've got a lot of people moving in this county. I mean, not a few, a whole lot of people. And they're not real young. There are some old ones in there too, just like me. You know, I've got a lot of problems with me. But I've still got to get up to the VA to get to the hospital. So I think we need to have our ambulance over on the mountain. So my dad told me a long time ago, he says, "You're never getting nothing on the mountain." I asked him why. He said, "Because we're poor." And I made sure I wasn't going to be poor. I worked every day, spent two years in the military, did my job, I was a steward and all. And we got a good, we got a good captain, you know, Coco. He's a real good guy. And we need people like him. You know, we need, we need a lot of good people. Not just one. You know, we need a lot. And I wish they would get the ambulance back. I really need it. Because I've got a whole lot of stuff to manage with me. All right, thank you very much.
Next, we have Michael George.
My name is Michael George. I represent the people of Charlestown as a city councillor. But today I come to you as a voter, a father, arts patron, ally, and most importantly, a citizen of Jefferson County, concerned that due process was not followed when this body voted to enact an ordinance that aims to criminalize parents who take their children to drag shows. I have the privilege of serving on the board of the Old Opera House in Charlestown, a theater that is a truly a gift to our community. We produce works that range from family-friendly musicals like Cinderella to shows that tackle adult themes not appropriate for children. However, minors did star in that show. And that shows that, that explores the trauma of child abuse. And yes, sometimes you will see men and women dressed in drag on our stage. All the shows have been given a rating based off of the MPAA rating systems used for film to inform patrons about the content of the shows. We rely on the parents to make an informed decision about what their children are allowed to see. This ordinance takes that power away from the parents and puts it in the hand of the government. I, for one, do not want the government telling me what my children can and cannot see. I agree, young children should not see adult shows. But that's for the parents to decide. This ordinance threatens the livelihood of the Old Opera House and any other theater in Jefferson County. It infringes on the First Amendment rights of every citizen of Jefferson County by making criminals of parents, performers, and patrons of the art. This ordinance is loosely defined as there would be unforeseen and would benefit from unforeseen impacts and would benefit from a rewrite, not only to remove the typos, but to clear up the language into more concrete definitions by what is an adult performer. It must be presented to the citizens, who must be allowed ample time to read and comment on the ordinance. Among some of the flaws that must be addressed, you've placed all children into one category. We all know something that is appropriate for a four-year-old is vastly different than what is appropriate for a 17-year-old, who, by the way, is allowed to see an R-rated film on their own. Who decides what is of literary, artistic, political, or scientific value? Who decides some work is, of art is obscene? Who decides what is obscene? You're going down a very slippery slope, and you're going to have a lot of unintended consequences. And you're going to put every art organization in the county in danger. The punishment is severe, and the court systems have been given many options to charge violators in other code. Do we really want to waste the court's time on frivolous cases when we should be prosecuting crimes that affect the community in a more tangible ways? I'm going to, I'm going to submit my written comments.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong resident taxpayer. I'm going to paraphrase some of my stuff because I've got almost two pages. Imagine that. Y'all make it really easy for me to write. I mean, there's nothing hard about it. County Commission is going to be confronted with getting a replacement for Commissioner Law. There's a real possibility that this could go into a tie. Roberts rules ties votes and cases in which the chair vote affects the, the results. Chair can vote and make it a tie, which means whatever's before them pays. The correct way to do that, since I've been doing this for over 60 years, is that the chair is actually supposed to stay neutral until a tie needs to be broken. There's other rules and regulations that the majority of the members can reverse the chair's decision. And there's procedures for that. I just hope that the county will allow the commissioners to make that decision and not the Republican Party, which Mr. Stollper is a part of the executive committee, which takes the structure of who's going to be replaced out of the county commissioner's hands. That's not the way it's supposed to work. Presentation nine. Approving a ambulance transmission repair. First off, why are the emails saying this is so urgent? This happened on 5/15. That's a month ago. And it took almost $2,000 to figure out the transmission was bad. This is a normal thing that happens. The transmission could have been purchased by the county's own repair shop for $8,500 with three years, 100,000 mile warranty, when in fact, if this other facility has already done it, it's only two years, 24,000 miles. And it's the one from Dodge is available in two days. And the other transmission wasn't going to be available until yesterday. There's some big concerns here. Why is somebody else doing this work when we have a county repair service? Why do we even have it? Unfinished business. The ambulance ordinance. This rewrite. Apparently, y'all haven't figured it out yet. This whole thing's illegal to begin with. I've challenged this numerous times. And the court decided, well, y'all have a nice day. Appreciate your service, Claire. And I wish you well.
Carter, do we have anybody online? So with that, public comment is closed. We will move to, next on the agenda is item number one. Tom Hanson.
Deputy Lieutenant, Sheriff Hanson. It's good to see you all. So I'm here to try to get a new hire for deputy sheriff, the position of deputy sheriff for sheriff's office. And we're looking to hire Thomas Elijah Duncan. He's, just a brief summary of Mr. Duncan. He's 32 years old, lives with his wife and child in Berkeley County. He served four years with the Washington DC Metropolitan Police Department. We have taken Mr. Duncan and his training records down to the Law Enforcement Professional Standards Committee. For those who don't know, they kind of dictate, rather they'll accept his training, his certifications and whatnot. And they accepted it. So that means that he will not have to go through a full academy. He would just have to go through a comparative compliance academy. And that's good for us because we get him on the street a lot quicker. We're looking for Mr. Duncan to start this week of July 17th with the starting salary of $52,500, which is the new salary after July 1.
Well, I move to approve the hire of Thomas Duncan as a certified probationary deputy with the starting pay of $52,500 beginning July 17th, 2023. Second, any discussion?
Just double checking. I'm sure it's budget neutral for, for the new, new year.
Commissioner Tab, I think we have with the hiring of Deputy Moreland, which was our most recent one. We still have four spots. This would come down to number three of Mr. Duncan's. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ath, thank you for your service and good luck in the future.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item number two. Angie Banks Assessor.
Hello. I have the other six certificates to get them signed. I didn't know Steve wasn't going to be here. I don't know that it matters if all five commissioners sign them. What do you think? Do you think they? I've, I've delivered the books. Everybody has their books. I will put these certificates in once they're done. Did you want to go ahead and sign them?
Since we're all here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Because we've had, I've had other times. There's been other years that only four commissioners signed. Okay.
Okay. And do we need a motion for the approval that we're signing it?
I don't remember doing that before. I mean, they're just, you know, all the properties that needed to be fixed. All the new construction. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Just pick a spot. There's one that says resident.
Should we pass them around?
Yeah, I'll make sure everybody. Them over. Four pages. Okay.
This is four signatures.
Yes. Thank you. So thank you for signing the certificates. And the other item, I was approved to hire a new person out of the general budget starting in July. I'm just asking your permission to go ahead and have that position. And hopefully, I'll hire somebody in July.
What's the position, Angie?
It's for a clerk, personal property clerk. I have on here estimate, estimated salary around $35,000, depending on experience. And it will be on a 40-hour week.
I move that the Assessor be able to have a chance for the new hire of the personal property clerk.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries for zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item three, Nikki Painter, County Clerk's Office.
Um, so if you remember during budget session, we asked for money for replacing our electronic poll books. Afterwards, we found out that the Secretary of State's Office was going to have federal money available for a HAVA grant. And I am happy to say that we did get approved. We didn't get the full 85%, but we did get approved for a 50% match. And because we were approved, there is a, because it is a federal grant, it's a sub-grant. Under the federal grant, there is a sub-grant agreement that needs to be signed, basically saying that we are going to spend the money on what we said, that we do have the money to match. So that does need to be approved and signed by the commission. And just so you know, the amount that we were actually approved for was $49,100 for the grant.
And just once again, this is for the new electronic poll books.
Correct.
I move to approve the HAVA sub-grant agreement in the amount of $49,100 for new electronic poll books.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Next, we have Agenda Item number four, Rebecca Hall, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office.
Mr. Harvey was here last month, or earlier this month. And we had two grant applications that were assigned. One was a state supplemental VOKA grant application. One was a federal VOKA grant application. Shortly after those were signed, the state administrators redid the application altogether and combined it to just one application. So I'm here today, the same amount of money, just in one application versus splitting it over two. The only issue is is that Mr. Stollper is our authorized official. So his name is on the paperwork. I'm not sure how I can get that signed. And it's due 28th, so there won't be another meeting.
Well, I think, couldn't we authorize, vote to authorize it? And then, and just because his name's on the paperwork, say we voted for you to do this? I would think, I don't know.
Yeah. We could vote to authorize him, he could sign it.
Yeah, right.
Oh, he can sign it at a later time.
Yeah, as long as we've authorized his signature. Okay. Yeah, I think we'll do that. I will make a motion to approve and have Commissioner Stollper sign the 2023-2024 VOKA grant application. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda is number five, Kelly Franklin of the Jefferson Day Report Center.
Good evening. So I was before you a couple of months ago, requesting to apply for the Community Corrections Grant. I am pleased to inform you that Governor Justice awarded the grant to the Jefferson County Commission in the amount of $155,000, which is the full amount that myself and the grant writer asked for. However, as we just heard, Mr. Stollper does have to sign it. I did have to already ask for an extension. It was due by 5:00 PM today for a signature. I told him I was on the agenda for now. So I'm not sure how you all would like to proceed with that. I could ask for another extension, but I'm not sure that they would create. Because it would be mid-July before I could.
And it has to be Mr. Stollper who signs it?
His name is on all of the paperwork. I don't know if someone could sign it, you know, for him or I could ask them to resubmit the paper. I'm not sure. We've not ran into this in the past, since 2014 at least.
And we don't know. I mean, I don't want to discuss it publicly, but if he's back on Monday, I would hope that would be all right. But I don't know if that's true.
Back in town. Yeah, I just don't know if we can sign it, so I really think the only thing is to approve for him to sign it. He should be able to sign it on Monday.
Would it be okay? It also requires the county clerk's signature?
I'm sure.
Okay, that she signs it?
Yeah, definitely. I, yeah.
We can't make a motion to have Ms. Ath sign in his stead, since she's VP. What I was thinking too. We just have to cross up and just, your name, Vice President.
Yeah. So we can always submit a copy of the, like, unofficial minutes as well with the grant application, I've done that before. Stating that, you know, in the absence of the President, Commissioner, and the Vice President can sign this app, and that we just submit the copy of the minutes.
We will try that, anyone want to give a try at the motion?
I move that.
This is, this Nathan, I'm watching you from afar, across the street. Anyway, but anyway, yeah, I think that, you know, the commission just moves to have, to have Claire sign it, and then, you know, we can have Steve come in and sign it when he gets back from vacation as well, as of like a supplementary signature or something, but that's what I would do.
Well, I'm gonna take a stab at a motion, and I'm sure Nathan can tell me if it's not procedurally correct. I move that we grant our Vice President Claire Ath to sign the paperwork for this Community Corrections Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It's for the, I think that's everything. And it's a grant, yes, and a resolution.
I will second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries four zero. If you sign it, yeah.
So everything tabbed blue would require the new treatment proposition.
Thank you all. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, I don't know if she's online, Jennifer Myers, Jefferson County. Tony Melber, President of the Board, Laura Parks and Rec, Jennifer's not able to be here tonight. We are here tonight because, as some of you know, and I don't know if you weren't here when this happened, previously, the commission joined with Senator Rucker to authorize an aquatic study for the county. Fifteen thousand dollars came from Senator Rucker, it was matched by the commission, and the commission directed the Parks and Rec to get bids. Those bids came back and they were more than the amount. Were, even despite Jennifer's negotiating skills, and she's really good at that, they still would not go down enough for that amount of money to cover it. So you're forty-five hundred dollars short for a study that you wanted done, and we're not quite sure how to move forward with that. It was not something that the Parks Board and the Parks staff was involved in at all, frankly, we read about it in the paper, so we didn't budget for it. And I spoke briefly with Senator Rucker, and he doesn't know of a way to return the money state-wise, if they, if you decide you don't want to do it, if you don't want to commit extra dollars. And, I mean, it's easy to say, we'll return your money because you're right here, but states, yeah, a little bit different.
You know, I'm in support of it, but I would like to have, this isn't your issue, I just need to understand better where we are budget-wise. Starting the next one.
I think that's the same, same case we are.
Right.
We didn't budget it at all.
Yeah, I just, I'm just gonna make a comment, I think we have other pressing issues, I know it's forty-five hundred dollars in the grant scheme, it's nineteen, almost twenty thousand dollars from the county, I just think we have other pressing issues, I'm not interested in dedicating any more money to study.
And I'll just, I'll just add some clarification for the fourth, if I can make a decision. I've been working this week with pulling the current year-to-date budget numbers for each department, we've had a lot of changes over the past several months, so obviously with the turnover, it wasn't monitored as well as it probably could have been. So, just giving you a quick overview, will probably balance, but I don't think we should be spending any extra money right now. I'll see there.
So I'm not quite sure what to do with that thirty thousand that we have. Well, suggestions are welcome, because half of it is your money, half of it is state money, we're not quite sure.
Is it going to expire, or can we wait?
Well, I mean, we could, I'm sure we could bid it out again, I don't know how long this particular price is good for, but we could bid it out again in the future if, if you decide you want to go that route. Because I'm just, I'm just wondering, and I wouldn't know the state logistics, but wasn't it like an economic opportunity grant? And I apologize for not knowing, because again, that was not something that we were, but I guess, I'm just wondering if you could apply it to something else, although I don't know. I can, I can reach out to Senator Rucker and ask her that, because I think, obviously, rather than the money being returned since it was.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we hate to give it back, but.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the company that did, that has provided us with the quote, have we reached out to them to see if perhaps they could?
They did lower it.
They did?
But they wouldn't go any lower.
I got you.
It was even higher than this. We can sit on S. I think on it for now, I mean, we're not, at the park, we're not ready to look at a pool financially, there, there's just not a feasible amount of money to do a pool. I mean, we, we are sure we could glean some valuable information from this, as far as water parks or, or, you know, those little pads that, that's up or whatever. But we didn't, again, didn't plan for it, don't have it budgeted either, and we have a lot on our plate right now, and this is not at the top of it. I can reach out to Patricia and see if it can be.
I wonder if it could go towards the AM or something.
Yeah, so I guess no, yeah, no. Next, we have Russell Burgess, Jefferson County Department of IT and GIS.
Good afternoon, ladies, I'm Fraser of the IT Department, I'm here presenting in Mr. Burgess's stead. Our agenda item for tonight is, we're seeking commission approval to hire Chris Montemuro for a IT technician level one position, starting at thirty-seven five for a year. He's a recent Shepherd University graduate with a degree in computer science, with very high marks, he has a, a three point five seven GPA, which, as a fellowship or graduate, is not necessarily the easiest thing to get. And we've been in touch with him recently, and he's just acquired his first certificate that we look kind of for our entry-level positions. So we feel that he would be an excellent candidate to start off at the level-one position, and Russell and I hope that you will go ahead and approve this request. You may remember earlier in the month when we got commission approval for Pablo Cabrera. Unfortunately, a couple of days after you gave us the approval to extend the job offer to him, he took it, but then rescinded his acceptance. So this would be the lone person that we would be getting. And we're hoping.
Be the start date.
Russell's hoping for two weeks from today at the earliest, I believe that is the twenty-ninth.
And what's the last name again?
Montemerno, it's M-O-N-T-E-M-R-N-O.
M-O-N-O.
N-O.
Thank you. I'll move to approve the hiring of Christopher, I probably won't say this right, Montemerno, for the position of Information Technology Support Help Tech, Help Desk Technician Level One, at a salary of thirty-seven thousand five hundred, start date of June twenty-ninth.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Very much, ladies.
Thank you. Good luck forgetting.
Next on the agenda, number eight, Roger Goodwin, Engineering.
Mikes, I can, I can give that remote.
Okay. Yep, we will move it around to agenda item number nine, the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency, Approval of Ambulance Transmission Repair.
On behalf of Mike Stein, Director of the Emergency Services Agency, we are requesting a motion to approve the payment of twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for the emergency repair of the ambulance transmission for ambulance eleven oh five. And this is a budget-neutral cost, we do have this money budgeted in our ambulance maintenance category. The only issue with it was, is that it was over five thousand dollars, so in order to take care of the emergency, we just went ahead and followed the policy where the county administrator could approve it. So I did approve that, and the reason that it was urgent, just to address some of the concerns of the residents, was it was one of our alternate ambulances, and we didn't want to have that ambulance called out with no alternate or backup to address other service calls.
So I have a question. The, this was, we have one that's on order and coming in the end of August, is that correct?
Transmission?
New ambulance.
Yeah.
Is that, that is correct? And that? So we have two or three other backup units, do you, do you remember?
So each, according to Mike, each station should have a backup unit, and I think we have backup units for every one but one. And I can't recall off the top of my head which one that is. So we should have, once those come in, we should have backups for every single station.
It seems like a lot of money to spend for a little over a month's use, if the, if the new one is supposed to come in at the end of August. Does that seem like a lot of money to spend for about a month's, a little more than a month's use?
It's always good to have extra, you know, just so that we don't have a break-in service. And I think that that was just the concern, that even though it was a little bit expensive, that we just wanted to make sure that we were still providing seamless service.
Well, and I, it is expensive, but I also understand the nature of the vehicle that we're fixing, and the critical need to always have backup. And it was an emergency repair, it wasn't something that, you know, we didn't, would not be on call, so, and then, you know, all this stuff is expensive to be done, especially on an emergency basis, when you probably ask a business to put it ahead of their other work that they have in the pipeline.
So, so I have some questions as well, because I'm just reading the notes, so it's a ten-year-old unit, correct? And you had a plan to have a ten-year cycle on replacement units? So I guess my concern is similar to Ms. Krause's, is putting the money in the old unit that apparently has other issues as well. How many units do we have total? Did we, were we purchased nine ambulances? How many ambulances do we have total on our fleet?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but Cindy, do you know?
And so we have ambulances currently set, staff that, four stations, right? Is the nine, the new, including the new? Or is the new ambulance in addition to? Yes. I just.
The thing with fixing a car one, it's just the lead time right now is so far out to get in another unit.
Right, but we have a new one on order, is what I think this says, is coming in in August.
We do have a new one coming, and then I will just add to, discussion for later down the road, but we're gonna have to look at the ARPA funding, and we did want to commit additional ARPA funding for an additional ambulance purchase, and I believe that's with the Shepherdstown Fire Department. Currently, the way that we're sitting with finances, we're probably not going to be able to purchase that with ARPA funding. So I think it's important to keep, until we have our finances straightened out, to keep the ones that we currently have in service.
And so I, I think it would behoove the commission to have a serious conversation on the fleet that we have, what we need, and this ten-year plan to cycle out the old units. And I agree, I think we've spent like three million in the ARPA funds so far, so that has been set aside for capital. So I, I mean, I agree, I think we probably need to put on our next agenda to talk about the capital, the fleet, the ambulance, and what needs to be done, yes.
I would agree too, and I think Laura, our Fleet Maintenance Director, is gonna meet with Mike and I at some point soon.
I guess I just don't want to keep throwing money at something that's gonna cost us more money than.
Speaking of the throwing, you know, good money after bad, it says in Mike's email, he says here, our replacement plan was up and running, I would not recommend repairing this unit, as it has significant mileage and an obsolete airbag rear suspension that may need replaced in the future, and that has an approximate cost of thirteen thousand dollars. So, that's a lot of money.
I mean, I'm not saying that we should continue to approve for this, this vehicle, I'm just saying in the temporary, and since, since we're ending the fiscal year, we need to do an analysis on our ARPA funding, it would be in the best interest of the public to make sure that it's up and running.
I'm sorry, I didn't read this, what's the lead time on having that repaired on? Do you?
It's done.
Oh, is it done?
No.
Oh, okay.
Because I think that's, that's kind of in reading Mike's email, it's like the rock and the hard place, where you don't want to have the gap between now and August. Yeah, they had the part at the shop, it was a smaller auto body shop, so they didn't want to do the repair without receiving the fee first, which is a standard small business practice. But they were able to get it in right away once we had the fee.
Well, I hope we just don't have to keep sinking money in.
I'm gonna move to approve the payment, twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for the repair of an ambulance transmission.
Second, any more discussion?
Well, I just feel like it's a critical need, it's on our repair shop, not our repair shop, a repair shop in the county, and make sure our ambulance fleet is up and running.
Oh, and if I could just address quickly, Jane, you reminded me of that, one of the residents had asked the question about whether, you know, why didn't we have Laura's maintenance folks repair that? It's being an ambulance, or even a fire truck, that's a police vehicle, those are specialized vehicles, so, you know, we want to make sure that we have expert care on those vehicles.
And you need a transmission schedule, so you might want to.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That was it for Mike's item?
Yeah.
But Roger is here, so Roger Goodwin, Engineering.
I have four items. First one's a complete bond release for Rodrick Plains LLC Aspen Green Subdivision, Phase One A.
file number 07-15, asking for a complete release, the remaining $57,750 from the construction bond for the Aspen Green Subdivision projects located at the intersection of Country Club Road and Flowing Springs Road, Route 17, work appears to be 100% complete.
I move to authorize a complete release of performance bond number 1000956765 with the United States Surety Company in the amount of $57,000, $57,750 for Roderick Plains LLC Aspen Green Subdivision Phase 1A File Number 07-15.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The second one is approval to advertise for the building inspector position. The county commission provided funding in the fiscal year 2024 budget for an additional building inspector position. This is a request for approval to advertise for the position. And the job description is attached.
I'm gonna move to approve the advertising of the position of Building Inspector in the Department of Engineering, Planning, and Stoning.
Second, any discussion?
I do have a question, what is the pay, is there a range, I don't?
The budget provides a salary up to $49,000. Currently paying, the lowest paid right now is being paid $45,000.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The next one is approval to advertise for the Land Development Inspector position. The current land development inspector is planning to retire in November 1, 2023. For the county commission provided funding in the FY 2024 budget to hire an additional land development inspector after July 1, 2023, to overlap with the current land development inspector for training purposes. Six months of fundings provided in the fiscal year 2024 budget for this purpose. This request is for approval to advertise for the position. And I'll tell you that by the timeline, we're looking probably, it's gonna take as long as September 1st to get someone hired, so they're gonna only have two months overlapping for training at this point, it appears.
I move to approve advertising for the position of Land Development Inspector in the Department of Engineering, Planning, and Stoning. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And this one is a Parks and Recreation Amendment to their fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Plan. This capital improvement plan amendment regards the addition of land acquisition requests for Parks and Recreation Commission in the amount of $250,000. The project was previously approved by the County Commission in the fiscal year 2022 CIP. But due to unforeseen long-term approvals and funding, Parks and Recreation did not expend impact fee monies for this project. And, or they didn't include it in the FY 2023 CIP. But they're now asking or request to add this project to the FY 2023 CIP. This $250,000 funding request is available in the impact fees, park lands, capital category. And all the pages that need amended in the capital improvement plan are included, made the necessary changes.
I'll move to approve the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year 20, Fiscal Year 2023 Capital Improvement Parks and Recreation Amendment Number 1.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Yes, we have Laura Kuhn, Facilities.
Thank you.
I'm here with Eric Dethel and Chief Stephanie Rivers is here as well, on behalf of the sheriff. We're here this evening, before Eric started his presentation, I want to give you a little bit of background about why we are here and how it got to this. As you know, the past couple of years have been really difficult with current vehicles. Out of the seven I ordered for this fiscal year, I had three canceled after they were ordered. Four were on back order, I just got two last week. And then the other two, I was just told are in production, or will be in production starting July 31st. But the last one that got canceled, they told me it was gonna be a production and then they canceled it. So there's no guarantees that we will get those. And I wanna give you a little background on the age of your fleet. We have approximately 115 vehicles. I think you got this spreadsheet that I did, there's two pages to it. But out of those 115 vehicles, over almost half of your fleet are either over 100,000 miles or over 10 years old, or both. So we have 44 vehicles that are over 100,000 miles right now. 49 of our vehicles are over 10 years old. And to break that down even further, we have 21 vehicles in the 10 to 15-year range, 18 vehicles in the 15 to 20-year range, and we have 10 vehicles that are actually over 20 years old. Previously, we've been able to go through the RFP process to get vehicles. Because I used to be able to, if I need a vehicle, any time of the year, I could order that vehicle and there's no problem. Now, the problem with the RFP process is, once I get that RFP out there, it takes several weeks. You know, you have to give the person time to respond, get those quotes back to you. But now I don't know where those windows are open from the manufacturers. And then Ford can have a separate window and Chevy can have another window. So they open the windows for government fleet vehicles and then they close them suddenly. They don't give the dealers any notification, the dealers get a notification the day before and says, hey, you can't place any more orders for these vehicles. So we're running into those problems. And then with the age of your vehicles, you know, we're gonna run into safety issues. Fuel mileage, it's not as good on the older vehicles. Maintenance and repairs are getting costly as the vehicles get older. So, you know, in thinking about what I can do to remedy, remedy the situation, I started talking to Eric probably at the beginning of the year, several phone calls, and then we met to go over this information, we probably met three or four times. I brought the sheriff in, the sheriff very much 100% on board with this. The sheriff's office has a lot of problems with full vehicles, they don't have enough full vehicles. If a vehicle is down, if there's an accident, we don't have a vehicle, or if it needs repair. If I deer, they're struggling to find a vehicle to put a deputy in. You know, and some of these deputies are out there in vehicles that are over 100,000 miles and, you know, that's a safety issue, you know, they could break down at any time, we just don't know. So we had our meetings with Eric, sheriff's office representatives sat in on one of the meetings. And so now we put together this presentation after going over all this and think, and we feel this is the best way to turn over those old vehicles and get our fleet to where we need to be at a cost savings, as opposed to purchasing a new vehicle now, right? Because when we purchase them, we can only get so many vehicles a year. This way, we're gonna be able to split those vehicles sooner and hopefully maybe within a five-year process, we'd have all the vehicles into the leasing. Purchasing. But with that, I'll turn that over to Eric Ahal, he's from Enterprise Fleet Management, and he can go through all the information on what this program's about.
Thank you Laura, and thank you commissioners for the opportunity to see you tonight. Most folks know Enterprise Rent-A-Car, we have a location right down the street, actually. Our Fleet Management Division is not as widely known, because we've worked with commercial companies, business-to-business level, we've been doing that for 65 years. The last 10 years, we got into the government space, helping local governments, so counties, cities, different agencies, you know, that have a large number of vehicles for, you know, county operations. As the largest purchaser of vehicles in North America, we're basically a strategic partner to these businesses and counties and cities to help leverage the resources that we have that you just don't have on your own. So we buy and sell millions of vehicles a year, and with that comes, you know, economies of scale, resources, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So, like Laura said, we've been looking at the county's fleet for about six months now. We kinda did a deep dive into the current makeup of the fleet, challenges obviously that they're facing. And what we have today is a plan to help alleviate some of those challenges financially and operationally. So the handout that you have, it has about eight featured items on it, for the sake of time, I'm gonna just focus on four. So the situation, I mean Laura summarized well, the current age of the fleet is negatively impacting the overall budget and fleet operations. So 43% of the fleet today is older than 10 years. 62% of the fleet is older than six years. And the average age of the fleet is nine years. So if you were to keep up this acquisition rate, it would take you 16 years to cycle through all the vehicles that are in the fleet today. And by that time, I don't know if any of us are even involved in the situation at that point, right? So we wanna help speed that up. Older vehicles are impacting you with higher fuel costs, higher maintenance costs, unreliability, increased downtime, loss of productivity, and safety. So this is a problem that you guys have, whether or not you partnered with Enterprise. The situation is only gonna get worse with the increase in vehicle costs. Most folks that aren't in the industry may not know this, but the manufacturers have really shifted their business model the last few years. Historically, they offered government entities really strong incentives off the invoice cost of vehicles that they're not doing today, and they don't plan to do that again in the near future. So vehicles have caught, have increased in costs on their own, and then those incentives have gone away. So whatever challenges you already have, that's only gonna get exacerbated over the next few years. So this is a situation where you wanna act fast, with or without Enterprise. However, Enterprise is suited to be an outstanding strategic partner for the county. So our objectives basically are to identify an effective cycle that's gonna maximize the equity resale value in the fleet. Over a 10-year period, we project to be able to save the county over $900,000 while shortening the lifespan of the vehicles from 16 years to five years. And we're gonna do this in a way that is sustainable, and you can repeat the process, cycle after cycle. In the first years from the salvage of 33 vehicles, which are kind of the first 33 vehicles we've identified for replacement, it'll free up more than $224,000 in equity. It'll significantly reduce the maintenance expense from an annual cost of $145,000 down to $62,000, that's an annual cost. You'll have more fuel-efficient vehicles, so your fuel costs will come down. And then by leveraging Enterprise's unique financing model, which is an open-ended equity lease, you'll maximize the cash flow, you'll reinvest the equity from selling the vehicles at the right time to the right channels. And that's, that's how it becomes sustainable over a 10-year period and beyond. So, part of that, obviously an objective is we wanna increase employee and resident safety with newer vehicles. And then, to make it easy in terms of procurement, Enterprise has been awarded the Fleet Management Contract by Sourcewell, which is a widely-used national cooperative. My understanding of the county already utilizes Sourcewell for other types of purchases. It'd be anything from computers to paper towels and everything like that. So Enterprise is the awarded vendor for fleet management on that cooperative. So the results. By partnering with Enterprise, the county will better be able to leverage its buying power. So some of the issues that Laura talked about, trying to procure vehicles on a one-for-one basis or relying on only one source, that'll improve. Enterprise works with all manufacturers. We have internal pools of vehicles, we have a national dealer network, so we have multiple avenues that we can lean on to procure vehicles. We'll couple that ability with our data and the management process that we have to identify the best life cycle for vehicles, which models are best in class, the best way to approach maintenance and, and everything like that while these vehicles are on the road. So we'll focus on the total cost of ownership while the vehicles are in service. I mentioned, but by implementing a tighter and controlled resale program, you'll lower the total cost of ownership by getting a return on your investment. Today, when the vehicles are done with, probably don't have hardly any return. So by selling them at the right times to the right channels, there will be a windfall of equity that then can be reinvested back into the fleet, pay down that financing for the next round. So throughout the 10-year financial model, the annual fuel expense will decrease by 28%. So that's $84,000 annually. The annual maintenance expense will decrease by 57%, that's $83,000 annually. So you're shifting buckets there from operating expenses, consuming a lot of the budget now, that can be used on new vehicles, they're gonna be new, so they'll require only preventative maintenance. And so that goes away. And then by leveraging the equity lease program, you basically create an internal replacement fund. Again, this is all within the idea of keeping it a sustainable program that can last throughout the years. The fourth area that's important to focus on is safety. So for employees and for residents alike, this can be a big concern. Of the vehicles today, 21 vehicles predate anti-lock brake systems. 40 vehicles predate electronic stability control. And 71 vehicles predate just a standard backup camera. So these are basically the four reasons why I want you to consider approving, entering this agreement with us. And I wanna open it up for questions from the commission.
I have one. So this being a lease program, is it similar to a regular lease program with respect to maintenance and things like that? Does the county still do maintenance on the cars, or does Enterprise?
So the county is free to continue to maintain the vehicles, just like you own them. However, based off of traffic in the shop, the county will have access to Enterprise's maintenance network as well. There's about 13 repair facilities in a 10-mile radius that are on our network. So some dealerships, some independent shops, national brands like Jiffy Lube, those are places that can be utilized for maintenance outside of the county facility if needed.
I don't agree with that approach, because you gotta use the same oil and stuff in all your vehicles.
Well, we would be taking care of the maintenance pretty much the same as we do now. The only reason we would send a vehicle out if it was some kind of specialty repair.
Like a transmission or something.
Yeah, or even now we don't do our alignments, but one of the
Yeah, or even now we don't do our alignments, but one of the local shops does those. They're a lot cheaper than what we could afford to buy the equipment.
I think you have to have, yeah, standardized oil and liquid replacements.
Yeah, and we would still continue.
In those cases, we have a national service department. It's 200 ASE-certified technicians. They're the ones managing those transactions. So they're experts when that repair order comes over. They make the appropriate approvals to do exactly what you're saying, make sure the maintenance is correct.
Is there any kind of a mileage, you know, don't go over 1,000 miles a year, anything like that?
So there's no restrictions. This is why it's unique. It's different than if, you know, you or I were to go and lease a vehicle at a dealership. We are looking at the mileage patterns of the vehicle today to project values on the vehicles and know the appropriate depreciation rate and life cycle on those vehicles. But very consistently, because, you know, they're operated in one county, essentially. They're low-mileage vehicles compared to, you know, commercial industry. And so it's just a function of the market value of the vehicle. So, you know, when that vehicle ends its life cycle, one that has more miles than we thought may be worth a hair less, one that has fewer miles than we thought is worth a hair more. And the averages balance out, but there's no penalties or fees related to mileage.
Yes, that was what I was wondering.
Same with wear and tear.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. I've got my questions done.
Yeah, I have a couple. So I think you mentioned, if we enter into this agreement, 33 vehicles in the first year. Is that correct?
We would have to probably reevaluate the vehicles, but yeah, it would be around that number.
Around 33. And then I guess what would be the plan moving forward for cycling out? Some of these vehicles on the list in our fleet aren't too old. But in the mileage doesn't see, I mean, I know you've got some highlighted here. So I'm just wondering what the plan would be. Yeah, I can't see.
Yeah, it's really, oh, sorry. Basically, Laura and I created an initial roadmap. This is malleable. This is a five-year phase-out, just based on age and mileage. She knows, you know, the vehicles in and out, which ones have worse heartburns than others. And so she'll be involved in the entire process on selecting which vehicles coming in and out of service. But this is a way that we could kind of prove out the five-year implementation, and we can make adjustments as needed.
Yeah, and the sheriff's office would be very involved as well in what vehicles they need each year.
There's no obligation to Enterprise to follow a certain minimum of vehicles each year. This is consultative in nature, and there'll be a dedicated account team that is down with Laura and the sheriff's office a couple of times a year to plan out the next year. The obligations are solely to the leases already in service, and there's no requirements to do a minimum the following year.
I don't have any further questions that might have been asked. And I guess what just really stood out to me was the safety aspect and 71 not having backup cameras. So I think it's a little hard to believe that we have vehicles that old.
I've driven one. 2006.
I know. Interested in this concept, but I still have some questions. And, you know, we just have, down here, the cost would be the capital funds that we, I guess, have allocated for next year. I can't remember what that number is. And I just, you know, what's the, where, I'm the daughter of mechanic. Who's going to change tires? Who's going to check them? All that kind of stuff. I just.
Still us. Still, my department would still be doing all the work on the vehicles. Unless, like I said, it was a special thing or something my mechanic can't figure out, which happens every once in a while. We have to send it to the dealer or something like that, and warranty work, you know, vehicle warranty. So, you know, anything like that, we do send out. We don't send a lot of vehicles out now, even with the old stuff. We can put in engines. We can put in transmissions. We don't like to because by the time they get old enough to put in an engine or a transmission, we really shouldn't be dealing with that vehicle anymore.
Well, that's what I think from this list, a lot of these just need to be moved out.
And it's just impossible nowadays. We can't get vehicles like we used to get them. I mean, I used to be able to get a vehicle anytime I wanted, and it's just. And, you know, talking with the dealers, I've talked to two Ford dealers I deal with, and they're frustrated too because they don't get notice from the manufacturer support or GM just says, hey, we're cutting this off. And so the last two vehicles I picked up, you know, he was telling me they're not making money on government vehicles anymore. He said he made $100 on each of the vehicles that I just picked up a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, like Eric said, it's going to get worse.
In terms of the benefits of ownership that you'd have, the word lease is being used, but it's no different than if you financed a vehicle from a bank. You'd still treat it like you own it, even though the bank technically owns it. Because consider us the bank in this case.
I always pay cash for my vehicle. So I'm coming at it from a little bit different perspective. I understand this number of vehicles, that's something we got to look at. Yeah, I just kind of need to see the numbers on the capital funds and what's projected out as we move forward. I mean, I don't know if there's any way to predict.
Do you mean down the road as we move forward?
Yes, like each year, for the next five years, how much and how many vehicle cost analysis-type thing?
Yeah, and I think we can do that once we drill down exactly which vehicles that we want to replace.
I see what you mean.
Because this was more of a big-picture kind of looking at our fleet. But, you know, once we drill down on it and figure out exactly which vehicles we're going to be getting out of here within the next four years, we can probably drill down. I don't want that more.
Yeah, I mean, we're seeking approval that Enterprise is the right strategic partner to team up with. And then to get started, to put this into implementation, Laura and I will whittle down a list, obviously confirm the funding before anything is solidified.
So this is really the first step?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I will move to approve the Director of Fleet and Facilities Management to move forward with transitioning the county's fleet from purchase vehicles to a lease vehicle program through Enterprise Fleet Management. Is there any further discussion?
One second.
Any further discussion?
I'm still a little wobbly here because I don't have numbers in front of me. And I don't know if there's any other fleet management possibility, you know, another company. Nothing against your company, but, you know.
And this is the preliminary step, so we will have better numbers as we move on. And nothing's in stone at this point. We haven't signed anything or anything like that, so.
That's what I wanted to make sure. It's not like we're entering into a contract.
Right, not at this point, no.
Exploratory relationships.
Well, all those in favor, say aye. Motion carries for zero. On the agenda is item number 11, Cindy Resner.
Good evening, commissioners. Mer, Deputy County Administrator. I have received what we're reviewing and approving today is the renewal of our liability insurance, so automotive insurance, property insurance, workers' comp. Pretty much straightforward. I did not change anything in our request to WV Corp. As far as any change of coverage, they stay with what we had last year. There were some increases and some property values have gone way up. There was appraisal done, and property is done at replacement costs. Just with the building materials increasing, everything increasing with that. I mean, it is what it is. And I did want to point, there are two proposals. One is for Emergency Services Agency. One is for the commission. Those were done separately at the time. And also, we have further, you know, more assets with the commission as far as the ambulances are now included. I don't know if you had any questions?
You're saying there's, talking about the.
I'm sorry, I guess I move to, on the first one, the attachments, I think, were reversed.
West Virginia Court Insurance Renewal.
Yes. The county commission and then the ESA. Because those were, you know, all the information was submitted to WV Corp a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
As far as.
I want to make sure what was happening here.
And this is something we budget for every year, and this is renewal is a process that we go through every year with them.
I guess, I think Jane might be trying to ask this. With the, you're on the workers' comp plan with West Virginia, West Virginia court fiscal, did you say there was an increase in the premium?
Yes, because they did a, we haven't had an appraisal done probably in four to five years, they said. Maybe with COVID and everything. So they did reappraise a lot of our properties, and things have just increased.
So.
So.
There's no.
Yes, I can give you that.
I'd be in here and I'd.
Well, you probably, it is an increase of 15% from last year for the commission packet. Increase of $70,000. 70,000, $70,659. And then the Emergency Services Agency was an increase of $14,920.
Increase with the commission that was moving ambulances over to commission.
Because those are assets now right under here. Well, it's just the increase of the cost of replacement. And they also did a new appraisal for our EDP, which is the electronic data processing. That's our software, computers. All of that stuff got reappraised higher.
Yes, as we know.
But WV Corp is really the only, I mean, that's the only game in town.
Well, I will make a motion to accept the fiscal year 22 Risk and Workers' Compensation Plan renewal from WV Corp fiscal. One second. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. I caught that earlier for me. I said that was my.
Amend my motion to disclose.
I just want to, if you don't mind amending, to include it's an increase of 15% of $10,659 for commission and $14,920 for ESA.
So with those amendments included, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. And there is a signature on the intent form. Michaela, I think you can just sign this? Or are we going to clear both? You sign that later. All right, and then my next item was the RAMP summary plan description renewal. This is something through for our medical coverage and all the other vision. We ask Millennium Insurance Group, we don't have to have them prepare this for us, but we need this document to provide to our employees the summary plan description. And we did make a change to it this year with the change of the dental coverage since we went from Delta to Highmark. So it is, and we, this would just be professional service of $250 to prepare the document that then gets provided to all the employees.
So that's one clause.
Correct.
Do everyone.
Yeah, to do, I, there are three options on the form. If you see the one with the header that says Millennium Insurance Group. So there's one, two, three. I would like three, provide the ERISA RAP for medical description and all ancillaries. Am I pronouncing that right? Because that's the vision and the ancillary. So that includes vision and dental.
I will make a motion to approve the Millennium Insurance Group provide the ERISA RAP SPD for medical RX and all ancillaries for a fee of $250. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries for zero. Next on the agenda is item number 12.
Do you want to skip me and come back?
We can do that. So we will move to unfinished business. Unfinished business number 13, review and discussion of ambience fee ordinance.
With Michaela and Nathan's help, if needed. So this is continuation of our conversation at the last meeting. And Trishaw, I believe, Commissioner Jackson, you had asked for a redline version just to better understand changes with this, just some modifications that we made to the already existing ambulance service fee ordinance. And to reconfirm, there's no change in the rate. That still remains, you know, the $39 for residents. It was really just an administrative change that we had really, on page four at the top, the late fee, that was where we wanted to consolidate the late fee into only one. It'll give residents three more months to pay the bill, and then if still late, then we would charge the $15 as a late fee, just that one time. Other than those two notices, which were very difficult for Emma to manage and confusing to everybody.
And it also clarified who would be charged then, because, you know, some of the schools were paying somewhere.
Right, and that, so I tried to.
Government agencies were paying either, so.
And I, and this is your decision. You can either, on the second, really, it's not, I added it right below or right behind the agenda request as far as just kind of what the current information is as to what's happening with some schools, okay? But not all. Option one, that has all the redlining, is if you go ahead and do make these certain things, courthouse, federal, state, schools, churches exempt. Or option two, try to attempt collection from all these, which we haven't, have not been successful at doing. So.
I'm going to just say, you know, section eight. One change even in the late fee is a change in the ordinance with fee collections to the residents. And I think it should, this commission should have a public hearing on this ordinance, particularly since it impacts their fees and their taxes. Section eight talks about weather developments and how the ESA board shall hold an annual public hearing for the purpose of receiving written oral public comments pertaining to the operations of the ESA within Jefferson County. This public hearing shall be advertised as a class-two legal action. Since this commission took action to nullify the prior board's actions with hiring and pretty much dissolved the board, I think it would be imperative for this commission to bring a public hearing for the tax and the fee in lieu of what the board did. And to me, nullifying their actions as required in here for a public hearing. I know there is a suggestion to hold one in November, but you're talking about billing and fees and taxes for July. So I believe there should be a public hearing. I do not like the changes that I see. I'm not in favor of the changes. Even a late fee increase, we really don't have a way to collect on this fee. I believe this should be deferred or delayed for a public hearing for the public since it's a fee and a tax and directly impacts all the residents in this sense.
No. Maybe I've missed it. Where is there an increase in the?
It went to $15. 10.
Initial, right.
Increased by an additional $10.
Well, there was, there were two tranches, right? So if you were, the first period was September, I think through December was $5. Yeah, I might be getting my dates wrong, but it was in, okay, October through December 31st, it was a $5 fee. And then if you went beyond that, January 1 through 31st, then it increased another $10 for the total of it. The proposal was, I mean, giving three more months of payment, payment opportunity, and then still late, the same amount of late time, really, the six months, then it would be the 15, which is the same as what it would have been otherwise.
Because you had a two-step.
Correct.
Very confusing for collection.
Yeah, with streamlining and the rate, there's not an increase in the rate at all, $39. And all of that stays exactly the same. So with streamlining and the rate, um, there's not an increase in the rate at all, $39 and all, all of that stays exactly the same. Page three. And there is, you know, we do send delinquent notices. There is a, a method in, office in place to collect the late. And we offer online payment and ambulance offices open for.
Also, I was just gonna say that the agenda had had review and discussion, not actions.
I, I have just a quick comment. I, regarding all of these exempt entities, I do think that the fee is going to be collected, every entity should be paying, especially the schools. I, I don't know why some would be charged and some would not.
Yeah, and I, I don't have an explanation for it. I just know what's in place for what Emma had advised us. There were two schools that did pay. But not all of them.
Okay. Did they pay because they were required to pay and others weren't required or they was the only ones who said, well?
Maybe they, and decided they would pay and the others just ignored the bill. I don't, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Can't answer for them, right? And I think, I don't, Claire on the agenda, let's see, review and discussion of the updates. I'm not sure what our wording said last time, but the recommended motion, motion to approve. Cause we will run into a time, you know, there's a timeline. As well to get the bills out by the end of July. So I don't want to put any more strain on Emma than there already.
There's no action. The current ordinance is still in place. Like there's no edits or actions to this. It's not like the ordinance still isn't in place.
I will add, just for like some financial clarity, picking on the ESA. And as I'm going through the end of the year reconciliation and, and looking towards the next year's budget. I know there's a lot of lot of different opinions on should we keep the fee, should we not keep the fee? And that's definitely something that perhaps we could explore from a financial standpoint. But right now, moving forward, it's going to be difficult to like financially support ESA on a regular basis. And I'm strictly speaking, not from a personal opinion, just from a financial standpoint.
And as I, as I look at the ambulance fee ordinance, the the real only changes were just to reflect the reality of moving from the ESA separate from the commission to as a department. And basically, if the changes are primarily just language that instead of saying the ESA board now says the Jefferson County Commission does this or that. And I think the only significant change is issue of going from a two-step late fee. Where you assess a late fee of a certain amount. And then a couple of months later, you get assessed an additional amount. To pushing that to that entire amount that the latest at the late fee. So, I mean, it's not increasing the late fee. It's just.
Pushing it out.
Cause if someone, it actually saves citizens the late fee if they come and pay before the end, right?
Right. So. Gives them more opportunity. And it's less money in mailing out notices, actually. We have to do twice to get across in the mail and.
So the text of the ordinance itself was that the changes are primarily to just reflect that the commission is now operating and collecting this fee as the commission and as the.
I would add to that too, again, from a financial standpoint, I mean, just currently with the 2024 budget. I think it would be wise to keep it as it is, but as we move through learning more about how ESA is going to fit into our budget. You know, we could assess that at a later date, once we have a better financial analysis. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I think currently where the finances stand, um, we should continue.
Well, I guess where I'm at with this is that we need to be able to keep collecting the $39 as we've done every past year. Um, we let a lot of people come and talk about the mountain. And if we have even less money, we'll see how we're supposed to make that a reality. So I guess we just need to figure out. Commissioner Jackson, you're saying that you need a public hearing. It's the four of us, so I'm trying to figure out what, what can we.
I would prefer a public hearing. Um, we, it was a change of the guard. The ESA has always held a public hearing in December before budget season for the public to come and voice their opinions on the fee. And since the board's been dissolved and at least their actions have what seems to be nullified, I believe it's on this commission to hold a public hearing on the ambulance fee.
I think it does make sense what Commissioner Jackson is saying. If people were given the opportunity to speak before and they're not now, that's not appropriate. Well, I mean, we do have it on our agenda. But it's right, it's not posted as a public hearing, but I'm giving the consideration of time in the and the work that needs to be done in a timely manner. I would like to move forward with it. I think we need, you know, a year transition to know where we're gonna what the next decision might be concerning the ambulance fee or any portion of ESA.
I'm just looking at this like operational standpoint, would the board at least consider perhaps approving the one-time fee? At least for now, as a change to the current ordinance. Well. Perhaps do a public hearing if you'd like, cause I think that will help staff save time.
I think there'd be no need for a public hearing if the commission takes action tonight on this one.
I do. I, I guess, I, I guess I need clarification. Is the company allowed to collect a fee? For a department that their, the citizens are already paying taxes to receive these services?
Absolutely. It's in the statute.
They are.
West Virginia code seven 1517 says a county commission may by ordinance impose upon and collect from the users of emergency ambulance service within the county a special service fee.
Thank you.
And I, you know, the commission can choose as well, but I'll say if, if we do move in a direction where, you know, we get rid of the fee or something like that, you know, we're gonna have to cut county budget in other places. So as long as residents are okay with us making that financial analysis.
I'm obviously flapping about cutting county budget in other places anyway, so. Okay. Well, if we leave it as is, it's, we still have the messy issue of the late fee, but that's maybe not as critical as getting the bill out and starting the collection process at this point.
Who's gonna tell Emma?
Yeah, I know, I know.
And there is an option to, um, Angela, our assessor uses, and she's still here, yeah. She uses, uh, I think it's called software systems and they, I mean, obviously that would cost money, but they do a lot of the billing for, you know, the assessor's office and right now between now the commission's finance department and Emma, we've all been doing it by hand. So I mean, perhaps if they explore that option at another meeting, that might be helpful as well.
Is ambulance fee collection in Tyler?
No, it, it won't, um, it won't print out bills, right? So we have to do the bills manually by hand, which takes almost two weeks to prepare manually. So that's an 80-hour period where you have the CFO tied up, you have the ambulance assistant tied up.
I thought we put ambulance fee collection person in the sheriff's office to do the majority of that.
But I think part of the problem is, I don't think, I believe we're not allowed to put it on the tax bill with the assessor, so it's a totally separate collection. So if we don't agree to these changes tonight, then the, the current ordinance stays in effect.
Do we still need some of Nathan's updates though, since the board is dissolved?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me that since the board of the agency is dissolved at this point.
That, that's the other.
That.
Is, yeah.
You know, the entire, the entire shift of the department or the agency to the department's status involves several of these things. I mean, one of the things is, is creating in the department, having a director to handle the stuff, moving the employees, which, uh, some of the staff. And I know Mikael has been working on moving employees over under the direct supervision and role structure of the county. And another one of those things is to move the ambulance fee collection into the county department. In our current ordinance, uh, the language of the ordinance needs to be updated. And that's really all that this is, is just an update of the language to say, instead of the ESA board doing this, that the county commission does it. Decately legal is in the statute. The statute gives the county entry authority over ambulance service. So that's why the, the language of the ordinance needs to be updated to reflect what we're actually doing.
And I, I think, I will say, I think this is actually the third time it's been on the agenda. We've been talking, we've been talking about it.
I'm, I'm going I'm going to move to approve the updates to the ambulance fee. Ambulance service fee ordinance as presented.
Second, any further discussion?
Well, for me, you know, it's a timing issue and it's, um, we've got to make sure the funds are in place from many different sources to support our emergency services. And this is one component. We need to update it to the, um, rec. You know, from the ESA board to the county commission. So that's all we need to act on. Kim. This, is this late fee going up or not?
You wanted it to stay as is for now and just pass it with the language, you should do that.
Yeah. This is what I want, just keep it.
But it's not going up. I mean, it's okay, either way.
The timeline will not extend it.
It's still $15 if you pay after January 1.
I, I think I understand that.
But it's up to you. I'm whatever you're comfortable with.
So Jennifer, do you now want to extend the deadline and make it the 15 flat? You want to keep it to $2? Five dollars?
No, I think the, the, I, I guess the point of that was for simplification.
Correct.
For Emma.
Yeah.
I was just, I don't think I was, yeah, I think I'm good.
Yeah. Cause it's, it's the people who were late in the first one aren't going to be late anymore.
Right.
It's just if you were gonna pay after, you would have paid that anyways.
So in that sense, it serves as a benefit to the citizens, cause it gives them an extra couple of months to pay. And without any, without any latency. It's only if they go past the January timeframe. That's the same like.
I would be more than happy to assist in the commission analysis as well over the next coming months with, you know, ambulance fee versus non-ambulance fee, what that might look like in comparison to our budget. That would be.
Well, I just think that we need all the money that we have and be able to keep collecting.
Build, hopefully the ability expands. That's where, where I've always been headed. By better.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So next under unfinished business is agenda item 14, discussion of July 6, 2023 county commission meetings. Cindy, do you have any updates on that? Um, I know, I think you're gonna send out an email. So then I, I guess I make a motion. That we will not have a county commission meeting July 6, 2023. Any discussion?
I I have a question. Has a little bit to do with this. The, the information in our packets regarding the JCC proposes to name persons to serve on the following authorities, et cetera. On July, Thursday, July 20th. I thought that I saw that in our last packet, having a different date of, I think it was today. Is that correct? Does anybody know? I just wondered who changed that to July 20th? And I feel the reason that that ties in to this discussion is if we're not having a July 6th meeting. And then the, I don't recall what the following date would be. I'm sorry, I don't know the second date off the top of my head in July. But, oh, it would be the 20th. So, so what hap, who, how did that change? Was this in our budget, I mean, our budget, I used to saying that, in our agenda packet as a different date previous?
For the board appointments?
Yes.
I think it was, and I think we extended it.
Yeah, we did extend it, but I don't remember why. But I'd have to talk to Jess.
That's, I, I think that's important. I don't. Was that speaking to us though, or asking, you know, did, that's my, that's just my question.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm, I know we're, I think you're going with this. I think it was in this agenda or two agendas to go. There's sufficient notice, so I'm curious to know why that was changed. I think it's imperative that we have some of these appointments in and ready to prepare to serve for the, the July meetings. And by moving this, I mean, we're, we're still down on these boards. I'm just wondering how that, that was moved as well. And just why it was delayed and why we didn't have interviews today or we're not, I mean, we haven't voted yet on the 6th. It'd be nice for those appointees to be on those committees and boards and serving.
That is a very good question. Um, I'm curious to know, and I wish I had my, my agenda with me now. I'm wondering if Commissioner Stollburn was, knew that he wouldn't be present this evening and that he wouldn't be able to have a, a say in the the vote maybe for these.
You know what, that's why we delay this, cause for the new commissioner that gets named on the 23rd, so they can take.
Oh, yeah.
In the process, that's the thinking. Right, because if they're, otherwise, they wouldn't have any input on who's gonna get named to the board. So we thought that would be fair to the new commissioner.
Do you, but do you think that the commissioners should have been made aware?
Didn't they discuss that? Didn't we discuss that like in the group?
I don't recall hearing that we were gonna move those dates.
Well, so do we want July 6th or?
The re, I'm sorry, the reason that I brought that up was because I don't think that gives adequate time. You know what I mean?
Just as a side note too, though, we're gonna be doing a special meeting on the 23rd.
23rd, which Jess is advertising tomorrow for the commissioner pick. So, I mean, if you wanted to pick the new commissioner and then do all the appointments on the 23rd, then that would give the new commissioner a welcome.
Here's a good duty. Get your feet wet.
We could have the meeting on the 6th. I want the new commissioner to participate in the process. Yeah.
Sounds like we're keeping the 6th.
I, I'm not trying to ruin anybody's holiday or anything. I just think there's business to attend to. If you can't make it, you can't make it.
Well, then I guess we are under new business. Agenda number 15, private investigator contract. I'll be presenting 15, 16, and 17. Okay. It was in the packet, was the request to approve a contract with a targeting investigator. We currently do have funds budgeted in our current budget for employment backgrounds through 911. And Jeff came across this individual who is a little more local, has a local background, so we're not outsourcing it to, you know, somebody in Maryland or Pennsylvania. This individual, you will see, he had a history in West Virginia. He served as a state trooper, served in the military. He also served in the Berkeley County Stool District and as a campus police officer with Shepherd's, Shepherd University. He recently got his certificate of private investigation. And what the vision for that is, is to do extensive background checks on our 911 employees to make sure that the individuals who are taking dispatch calls and working for our facilities are hot notch, you know, don't have any underlying issues that would present challenges or difficulties in certain. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. So what have we been doing up until now for background checks, like evaluations and that sort of thing? So what have we been doing up until now for those evaluations or those background checks and psych evaluations to serve in? What are we doing presently?
This has been being outsourced, and I don't have the name off the top of my head who that company is, but it's actually more expensive than, than this individual here. And the way that we wrote the contract is that for any large expenses, he would have to get approval.
Yeah.
I guess my next question is, was this advertised so that everyone could apply for this? Or it sounds like this person was found in the process? Even his, his background PI license is as new as May 12th of 2023. So was this advertised so other folks could express an interest and maybe perform background investigations? An effective bid to do that?
Sure. It was not bid out, and it's not required to be bid out. It would be more of a courtesy at that point. The reason why Jeff chose Mr. Alada is that, number one, he is local and has very high interest in giving back to the community through such services. And also, you know, when you're looking at hiring a lawyer, for example, if, if you want to hire a, an outside, an outsourced lawyer to handle county litigation, right? You want the best person available. So you want that high level expertise. And Jeff believes that this person demonstrates, Mr. Alada demonstrates that high level of expertise to provide us with the best, you know, resources and best background.
Is he only investigating hires for the 911 call center?
Currently, yes. Right now, we handle the other investigation.
So I guess some of my other concerns are, this is a pretty extensive list. I mean, this is equivalent to potentially a top secret clearance. Why do we need that type of investigation for our dispatchers?
Or, I mean, you know, let's say, for example, and I'm just going to throw this out, maybe somebody's on Makenstol in, in another state, or, you know, maybe somebody committed a crime way back when. Do we really want those kinds of people saving lives? Or do we really want to put the lives of our county?
Bring me to, why do we not use sheriff's office, prosecutor's office? I mean, prosecutor just hired a background investigator or investigator. I mean, why are we not pulling on those resources that has NCIC to pull that information, criminal backgrounds and that level of information? And those are resources that cost us little to almost nothing that we can use that are already in the county or in the state.
From my knowledge, just with talking with Jeff and how it has historically been approached, we do use those resources when we're, when they are available. However, you know, with all county governments across the state, across the US, everybody's understaffed right now. You know, we're hurting for staff, we have vacancies. Do we really want a sheriff's deputy who's out saving lives in the community to be scrolling through Facebook to look to see if this person is, you know, dangerous? Like, in, in that way, you know? Do we want to take them off the streets at that point?
So Michaela, you had said, though, that whatever Jeff's currently using is more expensive. Do you have the numbers on that at all?
I do not.
Has that been coming out of his budget?
It does, yep. He has a budgeted line item already.
And would he only be working for the 911 call center? Not anybody else? Only be investigating?
I mean, I suppose we could extend that to other employees if, if the board wishes. You wouldn't have a problem with that.
The total of the contract shall not exceed $30,000. If an amendment to the contract is needed, this will go before the county. That's a lot of money. That, that just seems an awful lot of money to me.
And the money's not, I mean, that number is not, it's not a hard number.
No, I understand, but. Yeah, I, I understand what, what it means, shall not exceed $30,000. And if it was over, then we have to talk to the commission. I understand that. But I, I, I think that's an awful lot of money. And it goes on to talk about at the back of this contract, the compensation rates attachment does talk about if he needs to buy an airline to spend money on a hotel room and a rental car. Do, does our, does our, whoever it is that does our background investigations now do that? Do they have to ever get on a plane and rent a hotel room and?
They don't go that extensive, from my understanding.
I just think this is, this is too, I, I don't, I don't like it. It just, it seems like an awful lot of money. And it seems like he's been given an awful lot of leeway to go, what if he says somebody should go to Florida? You know, he needs to go to Florida and go check somebody out and go to Disney World while he's there. I don't know.
Well, there is a clause, you know, I highly doubt whoever sends one on a plane to Florida and spend $500 on a hotel room. That, that, and it says county approval. So any large trips, anything out of the 75 mile radius, that, that will have to be permissible by Jeff.
I, I think it could be helpful if Jeff brought back the numbers on what he currently spends, because I, I do agree, Michelle Cross, that $30,000 sounds like a lot. But if Jeff is already spending over that amount, then this could be, if what he's saying is true, if this is a cost savings. So I wouldn't want to hold back from.
Agreed. But I think he should come and, and show us what he spends.
I, I just, for a 911 dispatcher, I mean, some of these, some of this investigation, I believe, is a bit intrusive, personal contact with relative, relatives. Do we need that level of background for someone to sit in a dispatch center and dispatch a caller, be able to know what to dispatch? Personal contact with current and past employers? I mean, that's common standard that you run, when you run a background check on education and like through higher right or someone like that. I understand needing a psych investigation or a, a psych analysis or whatever process they go through. But some of this seems very intrusive for any 911 communication center, a potential employee, given that most of E911 center employees make around $40,000. I mean, this is not the CFO of the county. This, this just seems very intrusive to me and overkill, so to speak, with DMV records, tenure history, financial records. I mean, as long as an E911 dispatcher showing up and doing their job and not handling money, do we really want to know what their financial background is to take a job?
To me, I understand where you come from, from what's printed on this. To me, the most important thing about an E91 dispatcher is that the information they receive in a crisis situation is confidential and not repeated throughout the community. So I think there's, I don't know how you can interpret that from anyone, but I do think we need a good background check. I would like to see Jeff come in and maybe explain a little bit more and see if he feels there's deficiencies in the current process and why we may need to go to this and, you know, outline possible cost savings or not.
We can certainly provide the analysis.
I think so. I'm not ready to, to spend money on that.
Probably number 16? All right, 16. We have a wage equity distribution for a public safety dispatcher. And this is a motion to approve the wage equity increase for the public safety dispatcher from $46,370 to $48,492.96. And the reason behind that is when we hired this specific individual, they were hired, then a few months later, the board had to increase the out of training merit rates. And with that created a disparity in equity between the new hires and this particular hire that was hired halfway through. And so the newer staff ended up making more due to the increase than the current staff member. And it's just one, just happened to one because of the date of the hire versus the date of the merit raise. So we're just, for a motion to provide this individual with equitable, equitable pay.
Do you know if his adjustment is in his current budget? Like, is it in the budget? I know we freed up some money when we eliminated a couple dispatchers last October. Does he have money in his budget to cover this now, or is this an additional ask?
It is budget neutral. Well, I will make a motion to approve the wage equity increase for the public safety dispatcher from $46,347 to $48,492.96. So I can, any more discussion?
Effective payroll?
Oh, could we do it effective immediately? It is in the budget?
Yes.
amended to be effective. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And next, I have a motion to approve the post probationary period salary increase for the systems application administrator. The position will be moved to $65,100, which is $31 and roughly 30 cents per hour. And we had this individual start as our administrator at a lower rate than what we had advertised it. So it's a budget neutral decision after the probationary period. And he provided Jeff with a, a good performance evaluation. We would like to make the motion to increase him to $65,100, which is still under the $70,000 that is in the current fiscal year and also under what we budgeted for the next fiscal year. So it will be a budget neutral.
And effective immediately.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the post probationary period salary increase for the systems application administrator position to $65,100 or $31.29 cents per hour, effective immediately. Again, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And Nathan, you want to go at the end still? County administrator reports. So first up is the human resources employee recognition fund. With our budget and saving some money with the later to be proposed budget director position, we had a little bit to play with. And an idea that we've had is to help with the recruitment and retention of our highly valued staff. And, you know, these guys work really hard to continue to provide services. It's historically known that government might not always pay, maybe paying as rudders or sheets. So, you know, we want to show a way that we all appreciate them. And what we're proposing, and I did put in emails and phone calls to the State Ethics Commission as well as the State Auditor's Office, for a human resources employee recognition fund, which would not be tied to any particular elective office, strictly coming from the human resources department. And that request is for $7,850. And the guideline set by the Ethics Commission is that you can only spend $25 per employee. So we have 314 total, which includes the ESA employees, which would equate to the $7,800. And that's, is still saving the county money as both this fund as well as the proposed budget director salary is less than the $95,000 budgeted for both this year and this for your 2023, 2024.
Yes, of course. What's the criteria which this award will be given? Does everybody just get it? Or what's the criteria for which they'll be eligible to receive this?
Sure. So we want to look at it as a comprehensive collaborative, collaborative approach, perhaps a funded picnic. And for individuals who couldn't attend the picnic, such as 911 or sheriff's deputies, we could have, Chick-fil-A does this a lot, they do little catered lunches, just to show us and just show them an appreciation.
All right. So you're talking collaborative and not like individuals getting a $25. Okay, that was my concern. But how are you going to determine who?
That was a great question. I should have clarified that.
Thank you.
Now move to establish a human resources employee recognition. Total amount $7,850. And the money will come from reallocation, 24 budget, $6,900.
I will second. I think that's very important, motivating staff. And I know there's been potlucks and things, but it's always nice enough to cook something and bring it and for people to be rewarded for their hard work.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. I'm going to jump to the budget director description. So my first question is to request the updated language to the job description as well as the salary. We did have an internal candidate with probably 30 years of finance experience, moved that into the element setting. And I took that into consideration while reviewing the grade and step. It is a grade seven. We originally advertised it at $65,000. The salary range for grade seven is about $58,000 to $94,000. The request based on experience and education would be the $72,000. And then we made a few changes to the job description, which includes the addition of assistance with payroll. which includes the addition of assistance with payroll, assistance with the Civil Service Commission, which will remain under the county clerk, but we're just providing temporary assistance for somebody can get hired and get trained. And then also assistance with P-card. And the reason that we did that is because the internal candidate would be moving to us. And in order to continue, we provide seamless financial services and not put ourselves in a pickle like we have with the lack of a CFO. We think that that will work really well together. And also, it's going to help us foster great relations between the county clerk's office and the commission. Motion to update the job description in the advertised, or the requested salary.
Well, I do have questions with that since, since you're indicating that the Civil Service Commission using responsibilities and backup to payroll as a temporary, does that need to be in this job description? And is there a plan for when that stuff will be turned over or relinquished or?
The Civil, the Civil Service Commission, that is temporary. And, and, but we could help with it long-term if needed. It just has to fall under the county clerk's purview for the West Virginia Code. That could be taken out if, if you would like. And Jackie and I can enter into a verbal agreement that we would continue to do that. As for backup to payroll and P-card assistance, that would be a permanent thing to help with cross-training with the finance department so that, you know, staff can take vacation or if we lose someone due to a termination or illness, payroll and purchase cards can continue to be moved through this. And we did that because currently we're a little behind just due to the lack of staff. So trying to prevent that from happening again.
P-card is in the commission office, correct, already?
Well, Jess manages the P-card setup, you know, the, the allocations. But our finance under the county clerk handles putting all the invoices in, making sure that those are hitting the budget items. And the internal candidate that we're pulling from there historically has helped with that. There have been some challenges from the bank in trying to get the Excel sheets to match with the munis import. So that takes a lot of time out of the county clerk's staff. And so we're just trying to divvy up these so that we can continue not to stress staff.
I guess my concern is that these are in the job description as permanent responsibilities. It's temporary. I mean, payroll is a function of the county clerk's office. I understand transitioning those responsibilities and that sort of thing. But at some point, I would think that would be relinquished to whoever replaces this person in the county clerk's office. I think I would, I, I think I would like to see that plan. I just want to make sure everybody's standing in their lanes and doing what we're supposed to be doing. And we don't have anything moving forward. And I do realize, that's why I spelled P-cards. That's, I know Jess has been managing that and, and doing all of that. And I do, I am aware that we are behind. I would.
I mean, if the commission is comfortable removing those three items from the job description and allowing the county clerk and I to just verbally agree upon that, then that's fine as well.
I would prefer that to, I mean, I would prefer that than it to be listed as permanent functions in the job description.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I can agree with it. And then the, the second part of that motion was to approve the adjustment to the salary request due to experience.
I thought that the requested amount of 72 was because that employee would be taking these other responsibilities.
It was, it's both. So she would be helping with those responsibilities as well as based on her years of experience.
Okay.
And as, as we move away from things like P-card and all of that, I'm going to be feeding this person higher level stuff. But, you know, because I've been doing a lot of the CFO duties without asking for a stipend or anything like that, I want to make sure that there's the smoothest transition that we can have, that it's as cooperative as we can have it. And so as we transition away from county clerk services and I continue to delegate more higher level stuff, I feel like that warrants the 72.
So am I understanding correctly that she will not be doing the Civil Service Commission, the payroll backup and the P-card? Or is she, if she will be?
She'll be doing it temporarily under a verbal agreement between myself and the county clerk to help with those services until we can train and find her.
She's currently doing that.
Right. I thought that we just heard that.
Jess does a different function. So the county clerk's office does all of the invoice matching. So they input the invoices, they make sure that it's reconciled with the budget. They get the information from the bank and then Jess does like approvals for P-card. Like who gets the P-card, how much money are they going to have? She's the administrative, county clerk is the financial.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I, it does, it does. And I'm trying to be very careful with taxpayer dollars. So that's all. And I'm also trying to understand, and I've been trying to understand since I got here in January, who does what job? And this is making it a little confusing.
Well, and some of the things to, if, if this adds some clarity, some of the things that I'm doing that I eventually will delegate to this person includes the data entry in the budgets. So over the past week and a half, I have gone in to the, to our Tyler Munis system, my department's budget. I've done year-to-date analysis, projections. That takes up a lot of time that I could focus on other things like operations. So, and also budget monitoring, you know. Eventually I will delegate that they will be doing the monthly, the quarterly reports and also working with the ESA numbers. I know we talked about wanting to do the department financial presentations during the commission's meeting. So I'll have that person, you know, help with that as well. So I think that the county's getting a steal. You know, we, we have someone who already knows our system, already knows our residents. They already know the government. And it's going to be really difficult on somebody else who has both government administration and finance.
Okay, so is that appropriate? That, that the employee would be working in the commission office and doing payroll temporarily, backing up, I guess, what, what happens in the county clerk's office?
Sure.
You want to go ahead? I mean, an example, in two weeks, I have three employees in the office and two of them will be out. So I, and the employee that she, she wants, I asked, hey, should cover the office while these two are out for two days.
And Jackie and I, I mean, we've, we've been working really hard and very collaboratively together to make sure that our, that we're doing a great job with the county finances. You know, we're, the temporary issue is, is that, you know, this person might need to spend a day or two in the county clerk's office. That's all just to provide the temporary services we need till we find someone.
And then training, that, that's what I was trying to get clarification on. If these are permanent duties of her, she is.
So then we're going to get rid of the first motion then?
Yeah, we can skip the motion, we can skip the part about the motion to include the, the updates. I would like the motion for the salary requests.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the hiring of Bessie Nelson for the budget director position for a start date of June 26, 2023, at a starting salary of $72,000 as part of, as part of the salary range for grade seven for 80 hours per week, which is a minimum of $58,870 to a maximum of $94,192.
I'll underroll that into one. Does anyone have questions about our candidate? And just to clarify for those listening.
Bessie Nelson motioned on the floor, we need a second.
I have a second.
Sorry.
I have a second.
Thank you. And so just so everyone knows, the candidate that I want to put forward is Bessie Nelson. She is currently the deputy clerk with the county clerk's office. She's very well-versed in the Tyler Munis system, which is very important as some of us are not as well-versed. And it's really going to be great for cross-training. And with the ability to just have her jump right in with very little training is, is going to be fantastic.
Any more discussion?
It feels like her start date is June 26.
Yeah, I said that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries for zero.
So I'm going to give an ESA update for information purposes. If you have any questions. Payroll is on track for July 1st. So that is very helpful. I've been working hard on that. And then also with the licenses, we had four of them. And two out of the four are good to go. The CLIA license is in limbo right now because the person that handles those kind of transfers is on military leave. He'll be returning in two weeks, at which time he did send us an email saying that he will update that. And then the final piece of that transition, ARPA, will happen in August, which is when the State Office of Emergency Services will approve our final EIN transfer. And they can't do that until all the three other licenses are complete. So that's moving right along.
So what was the EIN transfer date? Did you just say that?
I did. I said that they're auditing us in August.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So roughly August will have everything transitioned over.
Thank you.
On the licensing side, payroll is good for July 1st. Well, it's good to be on track for July 1st. And then there have been some inquiries regarding the Fire Officer 2 certificate. So I just thought that I would provide whatever historical background I was able to find on that just for your, for your knowledge basis. So, and you're aware of this, but for the public who would like to follow along, Mike was promoted to the, he was appointed the acting director in February of 2023.
You're thinking of Mr. Sign, correct?
Yes, thank you. Our new director of emergency services. In January, they had started talking about the new classes for the Fire Officer 2, which would be coming up. So between March 24th and March 26th, he attended the Instructor 1 course, the Fire Officer 1. And then he did the Instructor 2 on April 1st and 2nd. There was a delay. He was originally supposed to do it on the 1st and 2nd, but there was a group member that was serving in the military. So they had to wait for that person to return. And so they began on April 23rd, 2023. That is the exact date that the Fire Officer 2 class began. On May 6th, 2023, the FO2 certificate, that was the date of the last day of the class. On May 8th, test scores were posted. And we do have documentation that on May 8th, Mike did pass that. And the reason that the certificate was late between May and when we received it on June 8th, was that the individual at the state that processes these licenses or certificates, excuse me, was both on vacation and also he's been in the position for a long time. So he likes to do everything by paper. So it just took a couple of weeks to get that certificate back. So I know there was a lot of questions about that. So I had asked to be provided with it from one, just so that I could inform you more. If you have any questions. Thank you. All right, I will move on to the ARPA report. And it's very extensive, and I'm not going to go through every line item or anything. I figured I would give you the information, let you look at it at your leisure, because I'll tell you now, it's not up to date. You know, just with all the CFO changes and county administrator changes, we're a little bit behind. But the big gigantic packet you have, those are all the quarterly reports that we have submitted to the federal entity. Oh, sorry. Oh, is this it? Yeah, that big gigantic one. Those are, those are the reports to the state. Or I'm sorry, to the feds for what we spent the money on. And then you'll see on, there's like a multicolored Excel sheet. You'll see that green is approved and committed funds. Orange is closed. And if you look to the very last page, at the very bottom, it says balanced ARPA funding as of June last year is $164,362. So according to this report, we spent everything except that amount. This is old, so part of my job is going to be trying to figure out how accurate this list is and to come up with a new total for you. I will work on that with the new budget director.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I know we got a distribution in the first part of the year from the tribal, just, which was $50,000. And we're due for, if we haven't received it yet, another $50,000. And I don't think we've met to discuss what we're going to do with that $100,000 that was awarded to us. That's, I believe, sitting in the ARPA.
I'll make sure to check on that then.
Thank you.
And then there were also a few questions about the ESA budget as part of the ARPA funds. So if you look on your spreadsheet, number one is ARPA 49, which that's a typo, it should actually be 48. But you can see, and you have, you have two munis reports. So the lighter of the two, it says American Rescue Plan, and it says 49. It'll be account 207715. And then it says ARPA 29. So the original budget for that line item was $322,920. But we've a little bit over budget on that. We are at $337,378.25. Now we are over on that particular line item. But for ARPA 48, which is medical supplies and such that we were using, we are under budget. So we will be able to recoup the overages on 48 from, I'm sorry, on 49 from 48. And as we move forward with closing out the end of the year, new budget director coming on, we're going to try to get a better report for y'all. Much more up to date. But I live today, this is what we have. So if you have any questions.
We earmarked 5 million for ESA, and we're at about 3. It's the big picture that we need.
And then I do believe that the newest ambulance that we are going to be purchasing, which I think is around $200,000, is supposed to come out of the fund. So once I make sure that everything that we allocated funding for has hit our books, we can have a discussion on what to do with the excess. There's excess.
Thank you for that report. We've been talking about it, so it's nice to have it.
And you can take some time to review it. And if you have questions, let me know.
Can you send this to us digital, electronic? It's just easier to read.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's really small. I will send all of this to you.
Thank you.
I think that was all of my items.
All right, so. Sure. Yes, going to my items, I think I'm going to deal with item number C first, the discussion of these two circuit court matters. I would inform the commission that the documents filed with the circuit court apparently seeking injunction against the commission for its legislative act in revising the ambulance ordinance and related issues. Our office is preparing a response to each of the two documents. And I think the initial response would be primarily a legally related response. And if, if you want a deeper, so I'm reporting that to you. If you want a deeper analysis in that, then I would have to address it in executive session. But just how it, you know, what we're doing is we're just responding to that, those documents, just like someone filed a complaint. And then if that's okay, then my item number A, I have a matter to address to the county commission regarding the legislation and perhaps. one of the series of documents for you to sign that our council has presented to us. With regard to the, so that would be an executive session matter. Regarding to item, I would just advise the commission that there only today was filed a another lawsuit against us regarding something related to the solar text issues. I haven't yet had the opportunity to even review it, but we will address that and respond to those issues. But there may be a matter in executive session that I would address with that.
So Nathan, you'd like A and B?
A, B, and then F.
I would like to enter in, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session for legal advice regarding agenda item 12A, B, and F.
Second.
I need to second. All those in favor?